Okay, we getting started a little late tying up loose ends. But I'd like to call this meeting to order. And Dr. Aguilar, do you have any opening comments before I turn it over to Mr. Guidry?
No, sir.
In that case, Mr. Guidry, you can proceed.
Okay, with regards to the first agenda item, review budget recap and timeline. We're here for the May 12th meeting where we will present all of the budgets that we have presented at previous budget workshops and special board meetings. We have a May 17th optional meeting should we need. And then beyond that, we begin with public advertisement on 18th and 19th, public inspection from May 18th to June 1st, and then public hearing and a special board meeting to adopt the budget on June 1st. Any questions or comments with regards to the budget timeline?
No, sir. Doesn't look like it. Move on.
Okay. With regards to the budgets that are being presented, the non-general fund, with the exception of the general fund and the self-insured group health fund, we had presented all other budgets at a workshop on February 23rd. So what I'd like to do is go through each one. For those budgets that have, there have not been many, any changes since the last budget workshop, I'll just open it up for questions and comments. For those that have had a couple of minor changes to them, I will review those changes and ask for comments and questions at that point in time. So agenda item 2.2, proposed budget for 2016-17 special revenue fund. This particular fund, there has been, have been no changes to the proposed budget that was presented at the February 23rd meeting. I would open it up for any questions or comments from board members.
No questions. Go ahead, Mr. Guidry.
Okay. So for this one, for each of these, we're going to ask for a motion that the board authorize staff to proceed with the budget adoption process for this particular fund. I would ask for...
I move that the board direct staff to proceed with the budget adoption process for the 16-17 special revenue fund.
Motion by Mr. Centeni, second by Mr. Lachale, that we in fact adopt the proposed budget for the 16-17 special revenue fund. Any questions or comments from members of the audience? From any members of the board? Yes, sir.
Mr. President.
Hidalgo.
Couple of things. Number one, my computer was not up and running. I've been fighting with that for the past few minutes, so I may not, I'm trying to get online to vote. Secondly, did you ask already for, if there are any additions to the agenda?
I did not, sir.
Okay, we can do that. If you don't mind, we can do that here a little bit later. I would like to make an addition, but if you can give me a second to get...
Okay, we'll vote on this, and then you're right, because I failed to do that. I'm sorry. Okay, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote. Okay, motion carries. Can you do it under the general fund budget? Okay.
Yes, sir. I'll take that back. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Guidry, we'll move on to the construction fund budget.
Okay, agenda item 2.3, proposed budget for 16-17 construction fund 2012 limited tax bond fund. There have been no changes to this proposed budget since our last budget workshop. And in this fund, we show that, or reflect that we'll be finishing wrapping up all the projects that were funded through this particular bond issuance. I'd ask if there are any questions or comments.
Mr. Lachale.
I would like to make a motion. Go ahead. I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and approve 2.3 proposed budget for 2016-17 construction fund 2012 limited tax bond fund.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Lachale, and second by Ms. Morrison. Any questions or comments from any members of the audience? Any questions from members of the board? If not, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote. Okay, motion carries. Mr. Guidry, we'll move on to 2.4 proposed budget for the capital projects improvement fund.
This particular proposed project, there are two changes that are reflected. We included them in an adjustments column to facilitate review and see how we got from the numbers that were proposed at our February 23rd meeting to the numbers that are being proposed at our meeting this evening. The first adjustment, actually, there are three. The first is just a reclass. On the very first page, we, the name of the project was David Thibodeau Lighting Soccer Track and Baseball Field, and we needed to change the name to reflect the scope of the project. And that is David Thibodeau Lighting for the soccer field. So it's not a change in a dollar amount, it's just a change in the description of the project because the scope of the original project listed was beyond what had been, the monies that had been included in the budget. There are two others on the second page, on the technology, transportation, routing, GPS, other software. And we made it a point to include the adjustments in blue so they would stand out a bit. The amount for the Versitran software package that was approved at last night's meeting, $436,000. And then... A little bit further down, there is a $200,000 increase to the transfer to general fund, and that represents a per pupil amount for, that's to be used for the technology plan. That was presented to the board yesterday evening in providing more laptop and other electronic items, more access to our students. Because the individual unit prices of the laptops or Chromebooks or whatever is being purchased is less than $25,000, we don't record it in the capital improvement fund, we record it in the general fund. So we're just moving the funds from capital improvement to the general fund to allow that to happen. The funding for both the transportation software and this technology plan project is reflected as a decrease, the offset is a decrease in the reserve for what we set aside for 17-18 projects. That's the $686,000 figure that we see there, which leaves us with about a $3.47 million reserve for 17-18 projects. We try not to go beneath, below $3 million for that particular line item. And then the remaining change, reserve for technology plan, $50,000. As we move forward in our efforts to increase access to laptops and Chromebooks and things of that nature, to increase access to technology, we realize that there's going to need to be, there's going to have to be a replacement cycle for the, for the technology that we're purchasing. So we're going to, this $50,000 is our first year of setting aside our reserve so that in four to five years from now, when the, when the equipment that we're planning on buying in 16-17 needs to be replaced, we'll have the funding to do so. So that's what that line item represents. So those are the changes. Since the last budget workshop, I would ask if there's any, any questions from board members or comments.
Yes, sir. Mr. Centeni.
Mr. Guidry, regarding the ROI that we saw from the presentation for Versitrans last night, can we expect an implementation period that wouldn't have us budgeting for cost savings out of transportation for this year, but expect to see transfers back to capital improvements for the, our 17-18 budget?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
That would be very, very doable.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve this part of the budget.
I move that we direct staff to proceed with the budget adoption process for the capital improvement fund.
Mr. Lachale, second the motion. Any questions or comments from members of the audience? From members of the board? Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote. Okay, motion carries. Mr. Guidry, 2.5, budget for the self-funded construction.
Okay, the, this particular proposed budget did have some adjustments since the last budget workshop. I'll review them briefly and then ask board members for comments and questions. The first one is on page two, Lafayette Middle Driveway repairs, $82,000. What had happened in the initial proposed budget is that amount had been entered as $8,200. You can see that adjustment, the final line item on page two, transfer to general fund. So we went ahead and made that correction so that it's properly reflected at $82,000. And because it's $82,000 instead of $8,200, it is now a capital project that belongs in self-funded construction as opposed to building maintenance that would have been moved to general fund. The next line item, Eleo Judd East renovation, $180,000, ties into an additional, another project that we have listed further down where you will see an increase of $185,000. And that's the Eleo Judd East library extension and wing. It's my understanding, and Mr. Borlon, you can correct me if I missed, make a misstatement here, but I believe the library extension wing would be a standalone, and that's the second project listed. And then once, once that is built, it frees up the existing library, and that's where the renovation project comes in. So we've made those two, those two adjustments there. And the last adjustment we made was we removed the technology center generator. We will be looking at the possibility of moving the generator that services this building because at the time that it was installed, MIS had all of its equipment in this building. Since then, it's been moved two buildings down. We still have equipment here, but we do need to meet to see if it would make sense to either move that equipment and have it all in one place, and then just move the generator while we're at it. So we may come back to the board once we have that ironed out. Nonetheless, that particular project has been removed from the proposed budget. And that basically summarizes all of the changes that we've made since the last budget workshop.
I think Mr. Borlon was agreeing with you. He was nodding when you said that.
Okay.
Now I'm sure he is, was. Okay, any other questions or comments from members of, I'm sorry. We entertain a motion to adopt that part of the budget. Mr. Hidalgo makes the motion, and Mr. Lachale seconds the motion. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Any questions, any more questions or discussion from members of the board? Not, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote. Motion carries. We'll move on, Mr. Guidry, to 2.6, proposed budget for the 2016-17 construction fund.
There are no changes to the proposed budget as presented at our previous budget workshop. I would ask if board members have any comments or questions with regards to this proposed budget.
Mr. Lachale makes a motion that we in fact approve this part of the budget.
Second.
And Ms. Morrison seconds the motion. Any questions or comments from members of the public? From members of the board? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote. Okay, motion carries. Isn't technology great? 2.7, Mr. Guidry, the debt service fund.
Yes, sir. They have been, there are no changes being proposed to this budget as was presented at the last budget workshop. I'd ask if any board members have questions or comments.
Okay, Mr. Lachale makes a motion that we adopt this 2.7 for the debt service fund. Mr. Hidalgo, second the motion. Any questions or comments from members of the public? From members of the board? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
I'll open up a bunch of stuff. Seven-four, none against.
Motion carries. We'll move on to 2.9, I'm sorry, 2.8, proposed budget for the sales tax fund.
Okay, there have been no changes to this proposed budget since last presented. I'd ask if there are any questions or comments from board members.
The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt this... Okay, motion by Mr. Broussard to approve the sales, 2016-17 sales tax fund. Second by Mr. Lachale. Questions or comments from members of the public? From members of the board? Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Seven-four, none against.
All right. Moving along to 2.9, proposed budget for the school food service fund. Mr. Guidry.
Yes, sir. There have been no adjustments made to the proposed budget since our last budget workshop. I'd ask board members if they have any questions or comments with regards to this particular budget, proposed budget.
Mr. President, I move that we direct staff to proceed with the budget adoption process for the food service budget.
Second.
And motion by Mr. Centeni, and second by Ms. Morrison, that we direct staff to proceed with the school food service fund portion of the budget. Any questions or comments from members of the audience? From members of the public? Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Seven-four, none against.
Motion carries. 2.10, proposed budget for the 16-17 half-cent sales tax fund. Mr. Guidry.
Yes, sir. There's one adjustment being proposed to this particular proposed budget, and that is an increase of $134,000 to the lower class size line item. And that represents the two science lab teachers from the general fund. Basically, those two slots would be moved to the 2002 sales tax fund. And that is the only adjustment that is, that is being proposed.
Mr. Guidry. Excess reserve distribution. That's zero, correct?
We typically, the process that we normally follow, Mr. Hidalgo, is for the adopted budget, we typically do not put an amount there until it's actually declared. So we would come back with a budget revision. Doesn't mean that, that we're proposing that there not be one, but we typically wait until it's declared, and we come back with a budget revision and put it in at that point in time.
Makes sense.
Mr. Lachale.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we get staff to proceed with 2.10 proposed budget for 2016-17, 2002 half-cent sales tax fund.
Motion by Mr. Lachale, second by Mr. Hidalgo, that we approve the proposed budget for the 16-17 half-cent sales tax fund. Any questions or comments from members of the public?
Rodolfo Espinoza, Lafayette Parish Association of Educators. The 2002 tax is not about bonuses, and it's not about teachers. It's about students deserving getting the best. The taxpayers of our community made a long-term commitment to raise and maintain teacher salaries to attend, to attract and retain the best possible employees we can. The taxpayers of this community dedicated this tax precisely for this occasion, to stop future boards from using its funds to balance the general fund. Every year, we deal with this very same issue, in good times and now in bad. Last year, you added 24 full salaries to this tax. Together with the proposed 11 this year, it amounts to $1,000 per teacher in this parish. This process has gone extremely quickly, and I would ask, has this board fulfilled its responsibility of oversight to try and find, in this budget, enough money to avoid not only this addition of 11 teachers to the 2002 tax, but also to the increased class size and the other cuts that we're facing? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any, any other comments or questions from members of the public? Any questions or comments from members of the board? Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote. Motion carries. 2.11 preliminary report for the 2017 general fund budget. Mr. Guidry.
Yes, sir. We handed out a summary that compares scenario two from the May 10th meeting to that, which is being presented this evening, in the column described as 512, 2006 special board meeting, and then reflected the differences between the two. These differences basically being the adjustments that were made during our 510 meeting and voted on by the board. So I would ask at this, at this time, if board members would quickly review this schedule, take a look at the adjustments, and let me know if there are any, any questions or comments with regards to this comparison.
Mr. Guidry, if I wanted to make an adjustment, would it be proper for me to make a motion to approve this with, followed by the adjustments that I want to make, or is it more proper for me to request the adjustment and do it a different way?
Well, at our May 10th meeting, I think we took each item individually. So I think if we follow in that, you know, that same venue, it would probably work well for us, as it did on the 10th. So my preference would be to make a separate motion, and then we can incorporate that those, any motions that are approved into this scenario.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion that we reduce the number of cuts to social workers to two, and we instruct staff to find the funding for those two positions.
Mr. Broussard, second the motion that we in fact reduce the cuts to social workers to two and instruct the staff to come up with the funding. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Lindsay Tron, and I'm one of the social workers in Lafayette Parish. As I spoke earlier this week, I just want to share with y'all how closely and connected the social workers are with the teachers, the students, the staff, in and out of the classroom, as they work directly with students. We are working with kids who are struggling with anxiety, depression, hallucinations, major issues within their home, whether it be house fires, separation of parents, conflict within the home. They are kids as young as ages eight. They are kids as young as ages eight, presenting with suicidal thoughts, suicidal behavior. Where there are numerous kids from age eight to 18 that we have done suicidal assessments on and referred to hospitals, primary care physicians. Quickly been able to get them the services that they need. Keeping these kids alive, keeping these families intact. That's one thing we want to keep in mind. Consider removing social workers from the schools. That would be an injustice to teachers, the staff, and most importantly, the students. Their families that can't afford to reach out in other ways to get these services. The teachers need the support the social workers can provide. Students are suffering from any of these issues. Desperately need to be provided with the appropriate services. So it can enhance their ability to perform at their highest academic potential and growth. And unfortunately, if they don't receive their services, this can disrupt the classroom and the other 25 kids in the class that aren't able to pay attention or focus on what's being taught during instructional time. Eliminating social work positions forces social workers to add another school to their caseload, making it very difficult to adequately provide the services to the students who need it most. We see the teachers and the other students suffer when these kids don't get the services they need. Please keep that in mind, as we want the best for our students.
Any other comments, members of the public? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Amanda Taylor, I'm a school social worker as well, and I service three schools in our parish. I just want to reiterate what my colleagues have said in the past. We do provide a lot of intensive services to the students in our schools. We provide Tier Three services, those services are needed as outlined in the RTI Behavioral Plans. A lot of our interventions that we provide on a Tier Three level are what can initiate a special education evaluation. The pupil appraisal staff relies on those interventions to substantiate the need for a special education evaluation. We interact with teachers, students, school counselors, and administrators daily. We do have a significant impact on the classroom as well. If, as a teacher, if you have one student with one behavioral issue in the classroom, it's not just affecting that student, but the entire classroom as well. So when we're able to intervene and provide those services to the students, we do have a positive impact on that child's academics and the classrooms as well. I believe we all do have a common goal, and that is the academic achievement of our children in the parish. And the services that we provide really work to provide that common goal as well. So we just ask that you really consider this appeal and work to really minimize the impact of what will happen if you remove even more social workers from the schools. Last year, we lost a total of 11. Seven of those were moved to pupil appraisal. Four of those were eliminated through the RIF. And with that elimination, we, each of us took on an additional school. The more further apart we're spread, the less impact we have on those students, and the more academic struggles that we'll start to see out of those children. So we just ask that you consider that. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Natalie Duff. I spoke a couple of nights ago. I'm a school social worker at Broussard Meadow in Katherine Druxel. I came here dressed in my Leadership Day T-shirt because we are a leader in me school. And I'm saying that because it's just where I am right now, and it was such an important event today because I got to help coordinate tons of student events with students that I work with that have depression and mental issues, and I got to see them thrive today as leaders in the school. That's what it means to have us in schools. Because we can take those students with the issues that they have and see them flourish. So I just wanted to say that because it was just such a successful event at our school. And I'm sorry that you didn't all get to see that, but I know, Mr. Lachey, I think I heard you say the other night about the school safety officers, that you saw yours in action. My board member has seen me in action. My principal has seen me in action. I am vital to that school. I'm speaking for myself, but I know it's true of my colleagues as well. The relationships that we have with these children, it will be devastating if we have to only be there one day instead of two or three days. We cannot have the same relationship and make the same difference with more cuts. And as they said before we got cut last year, we knew that it had to happen. We knew that there were deficits. We took a hit, the kids took a hit, because we, some of us had to take on more schools and more duties. We are asking that that not happen again this year, because it's, we're not just speaking for us, but for our students. It's the students that are going to be affected. I just want to mention a couple more things too. In talking about Tier Three, we've talked a little bit about that. I just want to give you an example of some of the things that are involved in a Tier Three intervention, because it's very timely. It involves FBAs, which are Behavior Analysis. We have to assess, it's a very long process, and we are part of the team that does that, as well as monitor Behavior Plans. And that is a very extensive process. It's making sure that teachers are following them. It's making sure that interventions are done. It's tracking that behavior through a computer program that we have. It's very timely, and there are a lot of students on Tier Three in every single school. I also want to mention testing. During testing, we were all very active in intervening with our students. Counselors were administering tests. They were the school coordinators for testing. We were the ones there to kind of pick up the pieces when kids were affected or too anxious to take their tests. So again, I'm just, I just am asking you to please consider our students. We do affect the classroom. We are in the classrooms every single day. So I just, I thank you for hearing us tonight.
Steve Frugé, Supervisor of Child Welfare and Attendants, and also supervise the social workers. And I just wanted to, you know, thank each one of the social workers for helping, you know, keep students in school. Without them, it, we would have actually a large number of expulsion hearings. They help them keep the students in school. When she talked about FBAs and BIPs, Behavior Intervention Program, this school year, from since August to April, there were 903 of those that each one of those did. And I have some data information I just want to give to you, so you look at suicide and homicidal threat assessments, they did 193 this year. Manifestation, expulsion, things they did, it was 2053. There were family contact, they contact families for, you know, different issues. There was 1,699. They met with direct services with students. The first 15 minutes, there were 2,137 students they met with for 16, I mean, for half an hour or so, they met with 2,789 students. So they do a lot of things, they do impact closely with the students, and helping students stay in school, and at the same time, you know, helping child welfare and attendance. Without them, then we would have extreme, I mean, quite a few expulsion hearings. And I do have some data about expulsion hearings, and I guess I can give you that information later. But, you know, I want you to consider, it do impact all the students, you know, in our school system. And then, once again, I want to thank them for all what they do. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from members of the Board?
Ms. John Gill.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not speaking in favor of the cut or not to cut, but I do want to affirm that what the social workers stated was accurate. Until I was principal at my former school, I didn't see the value of a social worker until you witness first, second, third, fourth, fifth grade non-special education students have total meltdowns, total psychotic behaviors. And there's no one else to turn to except the school's social worker, who will work with that child for 40 minutes, 90 minutes, three hours, so the teacher can continue teaching. That's when I realized the value of a social worker. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from members of the Board? If not, Madam Secretary, I'm sorry, Mr. Centini.
Hey, I'd like to thank the social workers for coming. I agree, you provide a very, very valuable service. My, the reason I can't support it right now is I'd really like to know how we're going to pay for it first. I would appreciate if, I mean, I would certainly be supportive if a budget revision came back in the future. If we were able to determine right now how we were going to pay for it, I'd be in support. But I can't, I can't support after we've spent three months asking the superintendent to present a balanced budget, present a balanced budget, and then say, well, go figure it out. I mean, he would have figured it out already.
So the good news is, is that he's going to tell you right now, Mr. Centini.
That would be wonderful. Thank you very much.
So, members of the Board, the cost to add back two social workers is $150,000. I would propose increasing the number of assistant principal cuts by one, from 4.5 to 5.5, and then reducing the number of ESL program expansions, teachers from seven to six. That would save $156,000. That would allow you to add back two social workers.
Which school's going to lose the assistant principal?
Where would you, what schools would lose assistant principal?
So I'm not sure that we're ready. We've just been asked today to look at that. I'm not sure we're ready to identify that spot.
Any other questions or comments from members of the Board? If not, Madam Secretary will call for the vote.
Should we, Mr. President, I'm sorry, should we amend the motion?
Sure, you want to amend it?
Would you offer a friendly amendment?
I don't want to.
Okay. Then I'm ready to vote on this motion.
That's just what I call for. Madam Secretary, we're ready. We might not all agree, but we're all ready.
Seven-four, one against.
Okay, motion carries. Mr. Guidry, do you need an all-encompassing motion, or does this end our meeting?
Well, it would, it would help if the Board would consider.
I'm sorry, 211, I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
If the Board would consider a motion with regards to the superintendent's recommendation, because ultimately, when we go forward, we're going to have to have the offset for those two positions. So we would need some direction as to what those offsets are, so we can plug them into the proposed budget and move forward.
I think we have a motion that the offsets be what Dr. Aguilar just mentioned. By Mr. Lachey. I'm sorry, I thought that's what you were doing, Brit.
5.5.
I'll entertain a motion to, Mr. Dr. Chassot.
I'm going to put a little bit more on you guys' plate, just a little bit. I'm happy to speak with you guys afterwards, and I'll let you know what my intentions are. But I'm going to be in the hunt for $75,000 for a particular position. And I'll be happy to chat with you guys. I don't want to put any more pressure on you more than you guys already have, but just, I'd at least like to mention it during the meeting. So I'll speak with you guys afterwards.
Do we have a motion concerning the cuts to approve the, to fund the two positions for social workers?
We voted on that, Mr. President. To do what?
To approve where the money comes from to pay for the two social workers. Reducing by one assistant principal and reducing the.
Well, we instructed the superintendent to find the money, and he can bring that back in a revision.
I think Mr. Guidry wants, he wants specifically in the budget where that $150,000 would come from. It would come from increasing the assistant principal cuts from 4.5 to 5.5, reducing the ESL from seven to six.
Yeah, whatever he said.
Is that a motion, Mr. Hidalgo?
Yes.
Okay. Can I get a second? I'll ask, Mr. Broussard? Mr. Broussard seconds the motion. Do you understand the motion, Madam Secretary? Okay. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Morris.
Dr. Aguilar, we kind of talked about this at a previous meeting. The seven ESL positions, those are newly created positions that are not held by any individual at this time. But the assistant principal position that you're looking at cut is a position that has a person serving currently.
You are correct. I'm sorry, Ms. Morris, although because of some promotions, and there, slowly vacancies are occurring just because people are moving up, so staff is hoping to just fill, close those positions by attrition. And we're pretty close.
Jeremy.
Mr. Broussard. Dr. Chassot.
I guess I would be hesitant, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Craig. I would be hesitant to approve eliminating one of the assistant principals from their position if there is not sufficient attrition for them to move up and keep or create two new positions, or in the ESL, seven total, that don't even exist at this time. So.
We're running out of options here. The only thing I can offer you is reduce the number of appeal slots to cover the cost.
The assistant principal position that you're talking about, I know there's been four cut already in schools that have more than one assistant principal. Is this the same situation with the assistant principal? That there's multiple at this, at the school?
Yes, ma'am, most of those are, there's a lot of half positions out there. And so we'd kind of double those up and repair those with the different schools.
I just want to kind of piggyback on what Ms. Morris said. I mean, I know every, every position is vital, but to cut an assistant principal, that's pretty tough. I mean, I think that the assistant principal would be one of the persons who would actually meet with those students that the social workers meet with at some point, probably before the social worker meets with them. They might even get sent to the assistant principal for misbehaving. I'm just, thought it's worth, maybe through the appeal would be a better way to do it. Just saying.
President, I'd like to ask the superintendent.
If you're uncomfortable cutting assistant principals or increasing the number of cuts, I would offer take it out of the appeal slots. Just about everybody left on here is someone in a position. We don't have any vacant positions to cut. By the way, one of the social studies, a social worker position set to be cut is currently vacant.
Morris.
All right, so I understand that we have to reach a decision today, but because the ESL positions are positions that don't currently exist at all, I guess my recommendation for today would be to cut those ESL from seven to five. be to cut those ESL from seven to five. But if that fifth assistant principal does get promoted through attrition and that spot becomes vacant, then staff come back to us and say, we need to eliminate this position that's now vacant, and we need to add on this ESL teacher to meet the needs for the ESL students. I would rather do it when it happens than to do it at this point because it sounds like through attrition that we will not be eliminating the assistant principal.
Mr. Craig's fairly confident we've got enough vacancies. I believe we're at five vacancies in assistant principals. I will mention with regards to the ESL teachers, when I met with Ms. Ellison about a month ago, she was prepared to make it work with five teachers, as recently, yeah, two days ago. So while the program's growing fast because of the immigration of students into the area, she was prepared to make it work with five.
So it seems to me it'd be fairly easy after the budget process to come back to us and say, we don't need this assistant principal position anymore, but we do need an additional ESL teacher, and we make the change at that time. So I would recommend that to fund the two social workers, that we cut those two ESL rather than to cut the assistant principal, and then y'all come back to us at a later time once that attrition issue takes place.
Yes, ma'am, that's fine.
Yes, I don't think we need, yes, sir. Mr. Broussard?
Dr. Aguilar, how many appeal position are we going to eliminate if we go that route?
Two.
I can get you to 150. I can get you to 130.
I apologize. Appeals are 67,000 apiece, and the social workers are 75,000 apiece.
Ms. Morris.
I guess I'd make a substitute motion then to eliminate two of the proposed ESL positions, to fund the two social worker positions added back.
Second.
Okay. Motion is second by Mr. Hidalgo. Madam Secretary, Mrs. Centeni.
I'd point out that you'd still need another $16,000. Find it, I'm just saying, like, I mean, Mr. Hidalgo says we wanted to find $150,000 to fund it. Let's fund it.
Well, Mrs. Centeni, we had found it, but.
Cut three. Cut three appeals, cut, you know, something like that.
Ms. Morris, what about two ESL teachers in one appeal?
I would leave my motion at the two ESL because I believe Timmy's going to come back with a request to add back another position when we'll start diminishing the appeal slots.
Mrs. Centeni?
I'd like to point out that, you know, we're using $5 million of reserve money to balance this budget this year. Everything we're talking about right here, we're going to be talking about next spring as well. So just keep that in mind as we move positions around and fund positions out of different line items. Just, we're going to be talking about this next spring as well.
When you say fund balance, please help me get it straight in my mind. You're not talking about the three-month rainy day fund that we have?
No, sir. I'm talking about a little bit, about $5 million over the three-month reserve fund that we have. And that is money that is not, I mean, we're using that to make up the difference. And so next year, that money's not going to be there, and we're going to have the same budget. So we're going to have $5 million short at the least. So.
So we'll have a disdiscussion again next year?
We sure will. And it just makes it a little more difficult every time we add somebody back, despite the fact that every single one of the, as Dr. Aguilar said, every one of these positions is vital and valuable and performs a service that the children need, and we just, you know, we have a pile of jelly beans, and we have fewer jelly beans this year than we had last year, and we're going to have fewer jelly beans next year, too.
Any other questions or comments? Madam Secretary, we call for the vote.
What is the final motion? I know there's several.
To eliminate two of the proposed ESL positions, to fund the two social worker positions.
Eliminate two ESL positions and fund 15,000?
Yeah, my motion doesn't include the 15,000, so, just to eliminate the two proposed ESL positions.
Okay. Any questions or comments from members, more comments from members of the public? We have a substitute motion here. If not, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote. Okay, motion carries. Do you need another encompassing motion, Mr. Guidry? Concerning 2.11?
Is there going to be a request for another adjustment by Dr. Chassot, or are we done?
Dr. Chassot is not here, and he can't make it in abstentia.
Okay.
Then, Mr. President, I move that we authorize staff to proceed with the budget adoption process for the general fund.
Second.
And we have a motion in the second that we instruct the staff to proceed with the budget, 1617. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Any questions or comments from members of the board? If not, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote. Okay, motion carries. That was the last item on the agenda. This meeting is adjourned. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Guidry?
So at this point, the optional board meeting would not be necessary?
I don't think it's necessary.